August time to get our meeting started, Amy please follow.
Mr. Neely.
Here.
Mr. Ratt.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Barker.
Here.
Ms. Blaine.
Present.
Mr. Chu. Mr. Cost.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
Mr. LaBudice.
Here.
Mr. Horns.
Present.
Everyone here tonight, we please stand for the invocation and then please. Mr. Alton.
Mr. President.
President.
Lauren, we thank you for just a great time here this evening that we can hear about some great programs that are happening here in our city and the impact they've had on lives here in our community. Lauren, I want to thank you for all that our city forces are doing on this night and all the others to keep our our community and city safe. And Lauren, as we approach the Thanksgiving season, I agree that we would be each one of us thankful for all the blessings that we have received from you. We ask you to watch over this meeting here tonight and that we would do you farewell here tonight. Amen.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Tonight, I'd like to welcome Cash and Weston Layton. The boys are fifth and third graders of Blessed Sacrament who are going to lead us to the pledge scene. Go ahead, boys.
Meanest.
Stupid high. The United States of America. To God. To His. My nation. For God. Into this full. Third cheek.
Mike, boys, have a good eat up, guys. Uh, next up is Caucus. Do we have anything pertaining to the agenda tonight? Mr. President. Mr. Marmy.
Uh, yes, we have four items that need to, we need to invoke Rule eleven. Uh, myself, majority and minority leader are in agreement to bring these as a tiny issue with annexation petitions that we have to act in a particular timeframe, otherwise it just goes through without any say on what is actually the services being provided and other items. So I'd make a motion to rule eleven on ordinances twenty-five dash thirty-eight, twenty-five dash thirty-nine, twenty-five dash seventy-eight, and twenty-five dash seventy-nine.
All right, um, next up is twenty-five, we'll go ahead and start twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Amy, please read.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-eight by Mr. Marmy and Mr. Ratt. An ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately zero point nine acres, more or less, located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Heard you reading twenty-five dash thirty-eight, what did you wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-eight.
Sure. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost, do we have any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
I'm just gonna further expound twenty-five dash thirty-eight is, um, just basically consenting to the annexation. Twenty-five dash thirty-nine will actually be objecting to it, so that also would need an affirmative vote to object. Twenty-five dash seventy-eight is gonna indicate the services that the city is willing to provide. And then twenty-five dash seventy-nine is creating a buffer zone for that annexation. All of them are the exact same property, but we need to do all four of them in order for the annexation to go through properly.
Okay, any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. President.
We have a motion and a second on Rule eleven, do you get?
This, this. Anything else? Okay. Please read.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blaine.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yeah.
Mr. Hauser.
Yes.
Mr. LaBudice.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Twenty-five dash thirty-eight passes ten zero, next up twenty-five dash thirty.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-nine by Mr. Marmy and Mr. Ratt. An ordinance objecting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being zero point nine acres, more or less, located in Newark Township to the city of Newark, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Heard you reading twenty-five dash thirty-nine, what's your wish? Mr. President. Mr. Marmy.
I make a motion to, um, to approve twenty-five dash thirty-nine.
Sure. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
And Mr. Marmy.
I know I said we need, we need to vote no on this.
Any discussion? Amy, please follow rule.
Mr. Neely.
No.
Mr. Ratt.
No.
Mr. Ryan.
No.
Mr. Barker.
No.
Ms. Blaine.
No.
Mr. Chu.
No.
Mr. Cost.
No.
Mr. Hauser.
No.
Mr. LaBudice.
No.
Mr. Marmy.
No.
Twenty-five dash thirty-nine fails ten zero, next up is twenty-five dash seventy-eight.
Resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-eight by Mr. Marmy and Mr. Ratt. A resolution adopting a statement indicating what services, if any, the city of Newark, Ohio will provide for approximately zero point nine acres, more or less, located in Newark Township, a terr- a territory proposed for expedited to annexation and declaring an emergency.
Heard you reading twenty-five dash seventy-eight, what's your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmy.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash seventy-eight.
Sure. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost, do we have any discussion? Amy, please follow rule.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blaine.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost. Mr. Hauser. Mr. LaBudice.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Twenty-five dash seventy-eight passes ten zero, next up is twenty-five dash seventy-nine.
Resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-nine by Mr. Marmy and Mr. Ratt. A resolution regarding a buffer zone for the annexation of approximately zero point nine acres, more or less, located in Newark Township and declaring an emergency.
Heard you reading twenty-five dash seventy-nine, what's your wish? Mr. President. Mr. Marmy.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-five dash seventy-nine.
Sure. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Cost, do we have any discussion? Amy, please follow rule.
Mr. Neely.
Yes.
Mr. Ratt.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Barker.
Yes.
Ms. Blaine.
Yes.
Mr. Chu.
Yes.
Mr. Cost.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. LaBudice.
Yes.
Mr. Marmy.
Yes.
Twenty-five dash seventy-nine passes ten zero, next up on the agenda is minutes of the November third meeting twenty twenty-five, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. LaBudice. Second by Mr. Hauser, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote Saint John passes ten zero, next up is appointments, Mayor Hall reporting Brian Wood to the City North Board of Zoning Adjustment, his new terms begin January first twenty twenty-sixth, will expire uh, December thirty-first twenty twenty-nine, terms will be for four years. Next up, uh, reports of standing committees without judgment that will be received and filed as finance service. Uh, next up is, uh, reports from city official, Ryan about the city auditor reporting report for the year ending October thirty-first twenty twenty-five. Brenda Cooper, tax administrator, income tax revenue report for the period here, October thirty-first twenty twenty-five. Uh, communications, there are none in this meeting. And next up on the agenda, we have a short, short, short presentation. From the law director of this whole.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Council, for your time for us to share about Home Court this evening. I promise President Harris that we don't have any twenty-five minutes. Um, we didn't want to bring this presentation before you this evening as part of the National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, part of the events we had planned for this week. Um, but it just so happened to dovetail with our six-month anniversary since we have launched Home Court. So as of November seventh, Home Court has been, um, in practice or has been operating since November seventh, and and so I want to just share a few program updates. And then what I most want you to hear is from our participants and a handful, just three of our service providers. So Law Director Moore cannot be here this evening, and she was very sad about that, but I want you to know that even though she could not be here tonight, her mom and dad, Mr. and Mrs. Bob Fuckner and her sister Maria are here to show support for Home Court. So thank you so much for being here. Um, as I said, I wanted to share some brief statistics with you to let you know how Home Court is going. Um, we launched May seventh, as I said, as of today, we have eleven participant participants. Um, all of our eleven participant participants have stable housing or shelters, so, um, which is amazing. It's more than. And much of that success in getting our participants into shelters or into housing is due to our partners and many of whom are here in this room. So the community has come along beside us, um, and walked with us through this journey and helped make, um, Home Court the success that it has been to this point. So of those eleven participants, two participants are in residential treatment programs, three are in short-term shelters, and six were short-term housing, and six are in homes of their own. So we are so excited about that success. Uh, we have three participants awaiting admission this Wednesday, so Home Court continues to grow. Um, we have had one program graduate in our school, we have our first program graduate. She, um, found housing of her own with the assistance of the county coalition for housing, and she now is working full-time as a landlord. So she had a trading, um, just made some bad decisions that kind of spiraled out of control. Um, and those decisions kind of brought her here to Home Court, but we were so excited to see the success that she had. Um, so overall, in this six-month period, we had sixteen participants. We have our eleven participants, the one graduate, we dismissed one case to the, due to the serious health concerns of that individual, and we've had three unsuccessful terminations because we think those folks probably just weren't ready to do the hard work that they need to do in Home Court. Um, so at this point, we have an eighty-six percent success rate, and we are just thrilled about that. But again, all of that is thanks to the partnerships that we have with our community service providers. Um, we have thirty-five programs now, now coming up to collaborate with Home Court, and I just wanted to share a few pictures with you. Um, our participants are given keychains that are made by Crystal Bailey, who serves as the Home Court bailiff and is also security here, so she's here working this evening. Thank you, Crystal. So she has made these really neat keychains that all our participants receive when they obtain their own housing. Um, so we have two participants there receiving their keychains from magistrate listed. And then the other participant that you see there has also been placed in his own housing, um, is working with the Licking County Coalition for Housing on their VASH voucher. He's a veteran, and we were able to reunite him with his companion animal that was in the Knox County, um, cow. So we were so happy and thrilled that he got to be reminded with Mancy, his companion animal, who's now residing with him in his own housing. Um, as Tricia says, you have to come to Home Court to see it in action and to see what happens, and so many of you have been there. Um, if you haven't had a chance, we really would welcome you to come so you can see what's going on. Our folks are doing a lot of hard work in the midst of a lot of personal trauma, a lot of times we've had people who are diagnosed with cancer and are doing cancer treatment. We have an individual whose wife is a hospice, and they're engaging in this hard work though to improve their lives and the lives of their families. So thank you so much for your support at Home Court. We thank you for our partners and their support. But I thought the best way to maybe share with you the successes that Home Court is seeing is to hear through the own words of our participants and our partners. So our first participant is Keva, and he's going to share a little bit about his journey in Home Court.
How's it going, everybody? Um, my journey with Home Court has actually been, it's been spectacular. Uh, I never thought I'd come this far ever. It'd be three years, well, on the November twenty-sixth, I found my dad passed in his truck. I was completely homeless, using drugs, like, pretty bad, I didn't have nothing. Uh, just sleeping on the sidewalk and riding bridges, but uh, all due to a misdemeanor death charge, I thought was bad at the time. Well, I mean, back then, I thought it was bad, but, uh, rather than hemming me up in a jail cell and everything, I got welcomed to the Home Court program, which, uh, I never really had a family up until this, but, uh, it's like, it's not just a program, it's a thing. Like, the amount of life I feel when I go up inside the courtroom is phenomenal. Uh, right now, I I just recently got my GED, um, I'm actually in rehab right now, which, uh, I'm on the nineteenth thousand sixty days, and, uh, I'm, after, even after all this, I mean, they set you up for housing, they just, and I just have family, yeah, so it's, it's, it's really, so I'll be going into the service no sooner as I get out of treatment too, so I'll be going straight into the army. And, uh, I got, I can't, I really can't thank the magistrate, the magistrate list, she's phenomenal, uh, she did have to put me in jail here recently, this, uh, uh, I didn't necessarily, and which is really better, I did get, thought, you know, I thought I could hide it in such good speech, you know, I thought I could hide it, but she showed herself love. And I stand here before you, I had a hundred and seventy pounds, uh, I got all my teeth fixed, and I don't know, I haven't, I couldn't be better. So this, this program works, if you work, if you start working, thank you, guys.
All right, we have a couple of service providers here this evening, firstly, I'd like to welcome our folks from the Licking County Coalition for Housing.
I'm sure we've been through a lot for the twenty-two of our houses. And we heard about Home Court after the ordinance was passed, and we're like, how can we help? And, um, we have been at every home court, we've had a representative, whether it's a case manager or supervisor, and through Home Court, we've been able to help eight participants find housing, get them into housing, work with our case managers, but also work with the court to fulfill the bond that is set forth. And so that helps us have a little bit of leverage. Sometimes when we don't have that court backing, it's just hard to tell somebody, you have to do this. Um, with the court participating and saying, you have to do this, they have to do it. So it makes our job a little bit easier, but each person that works with LCH is our own case manager. And they call that person for any kind of questions, problems, who then can talk to the court, who can talk to, um, Sherry, and can really try to work things out before they get to the point where they have to go to jail or they break their bond or something like that. So we are always open to help, we want to help, and we're just so happy to be a part of this and able to use our programs to further get people into housing and help them get off the streets.
Good evening, everyone, I'm John Laval, I'm the president of Saint Vincent de Paul, the Saint Catherine Duxell Conference. When I was up there last time, um, we were with Saint Leonard's Church, but Saint Leonard's Church closed, so we had to reinvent ourselves. There was thirteen members then, there's thirteen members now, we haven't, we haven't lost a member, and we haven't stopped helping the court. Um, also, when, when, when I spoke last time, I, I, I told all of you that I thought the ordinance was gonna be a dorn in your side, it wasn't be good for the city. I can tell you right now, what goes on with Home Court, it's a rose for the city. A very big rose because the, the magistrate, the, uh, law, law director and their staff has put together a tremendous program for helping the people that are in need. Uh, you wouldn't believe, you have to really attend, somebody already said that, you really have to attend to really see how things are handled. It's not a traditional court, there's a lot of love, there's a lot of care in, in the court procedures. And it's just wonderful, it's the best thing, in my opinion, it's the best thing since sliced bread in the city. And, and I commend all of you, uh, the council people, and of course the mayor for, for your support, you really have to attend. But the participants are there, there are so many of them in that room, it's unbelievable. Um, that, or the clients that they work with turn around and they see all the support. And it's, it's just remarkable, we do very, very little. Uh, the thing that we do and what we've had done in the past, we furnish their cell phones. You can't go around anymore without having a cellphone, and you can't get much done. And that's one of the things that we provide. But again, it's a tron, it's a big rose for the city, and mayor, thank you very, very much, and thank you for every, everyone's supporting. Please attend and support, thank you.
Good evening, Council, uh, thanks for having us tonight to represent this work. Uh, I'll try to keep up with John's analogies of roses and sl- sliced bread if I can. Personal introduction, who we are, Saint Vincent Haven, for those who don't know, we are a fifty-bed men's homeless shelter. Uh, we are program-based, we expect our residents to commit to working our program in order to come into our shelter, and we are thrilled to partner with Home Court. The, the marriage of the ordinance to Home Court, maybe I can compare that to, uh, uh, Air Jordan's in the early nineties, they jump higher, run faster, stop quicker. Uh, you know, a lot of government moves too slow, turns like a ship. But our Home Court, run by our own magistrate listed here, is like a little sports car, turns on a dime. And it's, it's pretty great addition in this town. This is a giant leap in the direction of us ending homelessness in this community, so thank you, guys.
I would leave on this, before I sleep now, if I didn't remind you, it was some of the upcoming National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week events. This Wednesday, the nineteenth, we're having breakfast, a community dinner. We're actually asking you to fast for lunch that day and contribute what you would have spent on lunch um, to a local agency of your choosing that's making a difference, um, in the lives of people in our community. Um, and then come to the drop-in center from six to eight, it's gonna be kind of a come-and-go breakfast where we'll just get together, um, for a time of fellowship and just, um, being together. So I would invite you out for that, um, community dinner on the nineteenth. And then finally, on Friday, we will be part of the winter market, we'll have a table there where you can donate food items or hygiene items um, in the arcade. So we're really excited to partner with some of our service providers for the breakfast, and then it's just exciting to be out and get, um, to be able to have an event, we're gonna work through a table, we're gonna work, we're gonna spread awareness of Home Court. So with that, we are done, are there any questions from the county? Thank you so much for your time, I appreciate that.
Hey, let's see, next up, we have, um, comments from citizens that we have. Anybody, if you can, please, uh, give your name, address, and keep your comments in three minutes, please.
Good evening, Jay Yuval. Um, two-two-six Cadria Street, Newark, Ohio. I was here this summer pleading for help for drug tests. Uh, we got the city police more involved, uh, we did get it shut down. The owner of the house went to court, was to gonna be directed to go to Home Court. And instead, tonight, he's in a hospital fighting for his life. Here, we had had some of the legislation that I hear is possible to get for slum awards who allow, uh, misuse of their properties. If the church that is by me would stop sending the people, I mean, they, they, I think they realize that they're going to this house at two forty-nine Cadria Street. I've pestered most of anybody downtown that has a six-seven-zero phone, I'd probably call all of them. It's nice to have all this support, but in the meantime, we're living with criminals, robbery, drugs, and not, it's not safe in our neighborhood. And those who are not in our neighborhood, we who are not experiencing this, don't have a clue. I don't know where the help, other than I keep speaking to Chief, um, Deputy Officer Logan. He's tired of hearing from me, so is Jeff Paul, so is George, so, I mean, we keep asking for help. There is a councilwoman here that seriously engages her life to help us and provide us with avenues of things that we could do. We need help, we, our neighborhood is drowning, I believe the city is drowning, all these wonderful things going on. But we can't get the laws and, and we can't get, uh, somebody in the house, as Officer Logan told us, we have to have proof. We have lots of pictures, we're living with it, we have cameras, um, but we can't get in the house because, um, the bad people keep us out. So Sam is fighting for his life tonight. He was supposed to go home for it, we were hoping to have, the, the past interview. It's been two weeks, he didn't have this interview in time, blood has saved his life. All right, you're up.
Mike, if you have that, yeah, see off that.
Oh. Um, Cody Miller, um, seventy-four-six Maple Grove Avenue, President Harris, council members, Mr. Mayor. Um, we, we really need stronger legislation to crack down on these nuisance houses in Newark. I don't know what the solution is, but I implore you, please, please, look at, look at something. Um, in our case, property maintenance, they were the only ones able to get in there. Our, our police, they're doing everything they can, but they need strong people that go in there, but probably make this, they, they really do need some teeth to crack down on these houses, um, and if they would have been able to do something sooner, um, he might have been able to have the help he needed, and he wouldn't have been in this situation. We have a resource in Home Court, um, but please, can we look at something so we can make sure that our neighbors can be able to start getting that resource, uh, a lot, a lot better in situations.
Thank you, guys, come on up, man.
Thank you. Um, I'm here to invite everyone in this room. Oh, sorry. Maria Alejandra Garcia, and I live on two-three-zero Woods Avenue. Um, I was here a year ago, um, still, I want to stay in the conversation about homelessness, it is not a simple problem, and, um, I agree, we have a road in town now, but, um, a lot more can be done. Um, so I saw some of you at the screening of the, uh, movie Beyond the Bridge, a solution to homelessness, that's, that's just one step towards, um, advancing the discussion. I'm here to invite everyone here, their friends and family, to, uh, our continuation, to follow up to that movie. Um, tomorrow, we're gonna be talking about, um, what is going on in the economy of every family in the community that, uh, who what are the factors that make people become homeless? And so it's gonna be a conversation about Alice, which is the working poor or the asset limited, income constrained and employed people. That includes a novice, and that populate, that percentage of population is counting, unfortunately. So I'm gonna pass the cards. I hope to see everyone there to continue the conversation, can you pass this around? Um, so, thank you for calling.
Thank you. If I actually like to speak at this time, you have an opportunity later. Okay, next up is ordinance on the second reading, there are none this meeting, ordinance in the first reading. Okay, next up is ordinance on the second reading. There are none this meeting. Ordinance in the first reading, twenty-five dash thirty-five.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-five by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, and ordinance enacting section two fifty-six dot eighteen regarding public improvement retainage provisions and placing it within the administrative code of the codified ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio.
Twenty-five dash thirty-five will be held until our next meeting, December first. Next up is twenty-five dash thirty-six.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash thirty-six by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, and ordinance amending part ten, title four, chapter ten forty-eight, water of the codified ordinances of the City of Newark, Ohio to include section ten forty-eight dot sixteen, prohibition of water waste.
Twenty-five dash thirty-six will be held until our next meeting, December first. Next up is twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Resolution number twenty-five dash thirty-seven by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Marmy, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Newark City Safety Directive to certify to the Lick County Auditor the sum of four hundred eighty-four thousand six hundred dollars incurred by the Newark City Property Maintenance Department with respect to property maintenance violations to be prosecuted upon certain parcels of real property situated in the City of Newark, Ohio.
Twenty-five dash thirty-seven will be held until our next meeting, December first. Next up is resolutions on the second reading. There are none this meeting. Next up is resolutions on the first reading, twenty-five dash seventy-two.
Resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-two by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Raff. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the City of Newark to apply for funding for the United States Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance under the full approved VAS partnership grant program.
Twenty-five dash seventy-two will be held until our next meeting, December first. Next up is twenty-five dash seventy-three.
Resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-three by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
Twenty-five dash seventy-three will be held until our next meeting, December first. We're going to be visiting on December first, guys. Our last one tonight is twenty-five dash seventy-four.
Resolution number twenty-five dash seventy-four expedited by Mr. Marmy, Mr. Cost, Mr. Barker, Mr. Raff. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the reading of twenty-five dash seventy-four. What is your wish, Mr. President, Mr. Marmy? Make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule of resolution twenty-five dash seventy-four. Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker to waive the two-day reading rule. Can we please call a roll?
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Shu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes.
The two-day reading rule has been waived. What is your wish, Mr. Marmy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Making motions to adopt resolution twenty-five dash seventy-four second.
Got a motion by Mr. Marmy, second by Mr. Barker. Do we have any discussion? Can we please call a roll?
Mr. Neely?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Barker?
Yes.
Ms. Blind?
Yes.
Mr. Shu?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Marmy?
Yes. Twenty-five dash seventy-four passes ten zero. That concludes our ordinance and resolutions tonight. Next up is your last opportunity for citizen comments. We can read them.
No, it's missing. It's tomorrow. It's at six P M. At the tree.
Anybody else? City officials? Law Director?
I would just take everybody for questioning what the city has to say.
Mr. Ray, I totally want to thank the law department, the all three, and everybody for making people more interesting. And it's pretty neat. Congratulate the gentleman in the front here. It's just a hard road, but I know you can do it. You work hard, and you deserve better than what you're doing. Good people doing good things. But this brought community together in such a neat way, I would tell you, it puts big smiles on the mayor of the city. And it's very unique and very creative, but it's working. And your numbers tonight are phenomenal. So thank you, everybody. It takes a community to help solve problems like this, and this is exactly what's going on. So congratulations on six months. All good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Neely? No, thank you, Mr. President. I would just thank the law director's office also for that great presentation. And you and everybody involved, magistrate Liston, the service providers for making that very successful. Congratulations to the participants who are working that program better than lives. I do believe this is making Newark better.
Thank you, Mr. Raff.
Thank you. I have nothing to go on tomorrow. There's a QR code here that you can scan, and that tells you when and where that is. The information is actually there. Awesome presentation on Home Court. Very excited to hear that that's going very well. Very excited to hear that you guys are having great success. We should continue success with that. We are absolutely informed. We got you. Very excited to say that I have seen curves and pavement on West Main Street, all the way to the west end of Newark. We are incredibly close to having that road back come open again. Excited about that. I know that we are gaining support and gaining significantly to open the bridge on Cherry Island Road and close South Chelpham to do that. So I wanted to encourage you to continue to think about that, find ways that we can get that back. With that, I will go.
Thank you, Mr. Raff, Mr. Ryan. Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I just want to say the Home Court is fantastic. Caleb, I'm rooting for you, Ralph. The council, we're rooting for you. The city's rooting for you. All right. Very well said. Even your boys, we're rooting for you. All right. Amazing. I get the chills just thinking about how long you're going to be, man. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just again, like everyone has said, I'm going to echo my thanks to the Home Court team. If anybody thought we would be in this place six months ago, we probably weren't sure how we'd work. So to see the benefits, and as a gentleman from former St. Leonard's Church said, a rose in the city, it's great to hear. We appreciate that. Just want to invite the community. This coming next Friday, not this Friday, please not this Friday. On the twenty-eighth is our seventy-seventh annual Quarterness Day to kick off Christmas here in downtown Newark in Lick County. And we're looking forward with the help of NPD and NFD to deliver the big guy down the road. And we're looking forward to that. So it's going to be a great time. Hopefully, it's not frigid. Hopefully, we have some nice weather, and we're not bundled up and tugged. I also would like to congratulate the Newark Catholic volleyball team on their state championship win last weekend. It held a very storied history. My wife is a former player and coach, and so we were watching intently the state championship games on it. And so congratulations to the girls and coaches there. And then just with that, this is going to be our last meeting of November, so I want to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving and have a great time with your family and friends, and enjoy. With that, Mr. President, I'll say a nice word once more.
And thank you, Mr. President. First, law director, I know you're watching, and so we thank you. Thank you for all your work. Thank you to Judge Liskins. She's amazing. And thank you, Assistant Director Teney. This is just a wonderful thing. I'm noticing some faces in here. Sir, congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations. Thank you for all your work, and thank you for daring to do something hard. Thanks. Work out. Thank you very, very much. And to the residents that came out, there is opportunity for legislation to strengthen our neighborhoods, as well as to strengthen the great input of our property maintenance and police officers within our neighborhoods to create, again, a safer community. So I thank you for coming out. Sunday, I was able to go to fundraiser for the Lick County Champions Network and Lick County Apartment Association. They had sponsored the event. Champions have been in Newark. Mr. Gartis was here a few weeks ago, almost ten years. I'm a little bit biased. I've worked with them for a little over nine years, and I'm astounded at the work that's accomplished with very little and very little finances. And so with this fundraiser, to any of you who are able to come out, it will greatly help them. The Lick County Apartment Association, they are a great entity, and I know they work with housing and to really help people out in times of need. So congratulations to them for working the champions. So, thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Mr. Shu?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just echo. I appreciate your work. Presentation, seeing me, the contributions that you missed before, and the service providers who have partnered with Home Court. We really do appreciate all that you're doing to better our community. And thank you for being here to block courage, stand up there, and appreciate you for coming. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Cost.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate everything that the law director's office has done. I want to thank you all for coming out and showing your support for the kind of work that they're doing. I've been to several Home Court sessions. It is an interesting experience. Magistrate Liston, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate what you do for this. You're showing some great results in these votes, and we truly appreciate. The meeting that Alejandro was talking about tomorrow night is at the Hilton to discuss homelessness, and that's from six o'clock until eight o'clock tomorrow night. We'd love to see you all here and give your voice to what we're all working on trying to achieve. I feel much better about things than I did a few months ago. So I'm just happy to see you all here, and thank you all very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hauser?
Thank you, Mr. President. Caleb, I know a couple of people said it, but I want to thank you for coming up and being vulnerable like that. That's not easy. I guess my hope for you is we've had a lot of success with this, is that you'll take that lived experience that you have and help people around you, because that experience is super powerful. So I hope you use that. And I just want to say congratulations to everybody who showed up. That's an amazing accomplishment. I want to thank the law director's office and the agencies that were in support here for making this a success that it is. And with that, I'll pass this.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus.
Thank you, Mr. President. One night ago, a couple weeks ago on the fifth, I got to within my first time in court session. And like everyone else said, it just has to be an experience. The way the court operates, the way it runs, completely different from anything you've ever seen. And the change is, the life change is amazing and awe inspiring. So kudos to the law director's office, Assistant Law Director, as well, and everyone that's involved on the legal side, magistrate Liston. You do a fantastic job. And the time I was there, it was a blessing to be there and see the life change happen. For our service providers, thank you for coming together and making this community stronger and greater by offering your services. To the participants, we're rooting for you. Caleb, thanks for being here tonight. We're rooting for you. Every life change, bottom line. And I'm so glad this is here.
Thank you, Mr. Lo. Mr. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. Need to call a finance committee meeting for December the first. I'm going to start out with the congratulations to the Newark Catholic volleyball team for winning the state championship. It was an exciting run. In the state semifinals, they were down two to nothing and came back and won the last three. That is unheard of. Another unheard of is that the MAC is one of the biggest programs in volleyball as far as a league. They beat two MAC teams in order to win the state championship. I don't think that has ever been done in the history of Ohio volleyball. I want to invite all of you back here on December the first. We are going to recognize that Newark Catholic volleyball team. And so we hope to have everybody on the team here for that. Next, I want to talk about the Home Court, and I appreciate the law director's office and their presentation. It takes the team of the service providers, the participants. It just takes a team. And as far as the participants, we talked about different things. And this isn't something that's easy, but anything that comes easy in life is worth a dollar, and yeah, I toned it down. But the service providers are just, we appreciate the teamwork and the engagement. The entire program has exceeded expectations, and it's just incredible to be a part of it. And I'm just a spectator watching, and it is really exciting to just see the success of it. Magistrate Liston, there's no one like you. And you are. What you have brought to the community, not only with that, with this, but also I'm going to segue into Mr. Yuval and Mr. Miller's comments. We are working on legislation, and it will be here. Thank the lady behind you for bringing ideas that we can actually utilize that bring teeth so Mr. Paul can do more, so our police can do more. It is coming. It is in formation, and it will come. But magistrate Liston just brought so much experience to help us out. And you know, with Mr. Paul, with his experience and just being able to share what it is we need. It was just that team effort, and it will be. So thank you very much, Mr. Shu. Really appreciate you. And with that, I'm going to pass.
Thank you. Coach Wagner's good seat tonight. Coach was, he was my eighth grade basketball coach over Paulson. He was the hardest, toughest coach I've ever had.
We ran, even we, we had a winning season seventeen-one, but we ran like we were always losing.
Fun times. And I think the law director at that time, when I played, she was like five years old running around in the gym, so. Honored to have the former president, Mr. Don Ellington, tonight. Would you like to say anything?
I'd just like to say thanks. It's nice to be back, and you screwed the stadium still today.
Veterans Day was last Tuesday. I'd like to wish everybody that served our country and thank them for all they've done for us, and happy Veterans Day to them. And I say this every year, Thanksgiving is my favorite holiday, not only because you can eat, but because it's a time where family comes together, and all the stores are closed, so you have to enjoy family, so. Everybody, Happy Thanksgiving. And next meeting will be separate curves. All we can do is, sadly, we made it to Buckeye game. I took my grandson to his first Buckeye game ever. He's six years old, and he had a class. His dad prepped him for two weeks of all the Buckeye cheaters, so he carried him and he knew it. I have pictures and videos. Anybody like to see?
Do I have a bunch of Buckeye cheaters for that?
All right, say aye.
Aye.